That may be Bruce Aderman.
Ah, that looks like that's me.
Oh, that's Bruce.
There's Bruce.
I guessed right, Bruce.
All right, so I'll call the committee to hold the order at 7:50. Roll call, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson. He's is on mute.
Hi.
There he is. Sue Phylek.
Hi.
Bill Gribberick.
Hi.
Chris Mondy is absent. Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Jeff Walter.
I am here. All right, any public comments submitted to this meeting?
No.
Public comment, then we'll move on to Doug and proposed budget deferrals and strategic plan update. Oh, I guess budget proposals first from Doug.
All right, I hope you all had a chance to read the memo that went out.
Yes, sir.
Concerning the budget and some reductions that we're proposing in the budget. This is, this has been a trying exercise, a challenging exercise to get to this point. As, as we discussed at the last meeting, we're looking at some very significant reductions in the revenue for our village. How much, we don't know. And just, just today, the Illinois Municipal League put out a reduced schedule of revenues from the state side, and they're saying, we don't know. This is kind of what it might be, but we don't know for sure. So at the last meeting, we discussed two scenarios. One scenario where it's a, a quick hit on the economy and a fast recovery. And if, if that's the case, we may be looking at a 22% reduction in revenue, which would, in our general fund, which would, would to be in the $974,000 range. The second scenario is if it's a, a very quick hit to the economy, which we know it already has been, we're, we're beyond that point now. It already has been. But it, within the second scenario then encompasses a long, slow recovery. And it's looking right now like it may lean more towards scenario B than scenario A, where, where the recovery isn't going to be a swift recovery out of this. But, but that's yet to be seen. So what, where we've gone with this is the department heads have submitted possible cuts, possible reductions in their budget for their department to get us through this, this challenge that we're facing as, as a village. So each one has submitted their suggestions, and those are in the memo that you all should have received.
Mm-hmm.
So what we want to do tonight is to look through all of those and discuss those. And we, we need to discuss them in, in quite a bit of detail. So it's going to extend your meeting here a little bit. And if you, if you haven't had dinner yet, we may send somebody out to get pizza or something for you. But I, I wanted to take the time to go through these in, in pretty good detail. So if you would look at the memo, and we'll go through that department by department.
All right.
So that would be, we'd be starting on numbered page four, the pages number four. It says COVID-19 Financial Response Plan at the top. And the first section there is administration. I'm going to let each of the department heads speak a, a bit on their department, on, on their entries for their department. Now, keep, keep in mind, we're looking at a reduction in revenue between $974,000 for scenario A and a million nine hundred, almost, almost $2 million for scenario B. As we look at these suggestions tonight from the department heads, the total of theirs comes up, and you'll see that at the very end. The total comes up to be a million, I wrote it down here. A little over a million dollars. So it's, it helps us to meet the reductions in scenario A. But if, if it turns out that we're going to be scenario B, then we're, we're looking at more reductions we're going to have to make. The total of the reductions that the department heads are suggesting are $1,138,547. So just, just a little bit more than the proposed reduction for scenario A. So let's, let's go over this. We're on page four of the memo now, and that's administration. And John, if, if you would, review those slides with us, if you would, please.
Well, the first item that's on there is for $33,000. It was for a staffing and organizational study. It was one of the strategic action plan items. And Northern Illinois Center for Governmental Studies was going to help us out with that. It seemed like a good time to, to start working on that until this nonsense started. So it's, it's definitely something that we can put on hold, that we can defer, whether it's something that's done later this year or it's next year. So that, that was a fairly easy one to do. The UCDC contract hiring of a director, that was going to be new this year. And the budget amount was $50,000 plus some extras to get them started. If we eliminate that, it's $60,000. Talked about a new building or a new sign out in front of Village Hall. That was $36,000. Once again, something that we can put off till later this year or next year. Looking at an Ozley grant for the community center to do a park up there just to make the application for the Ozley grant. That would be about a $12,000 to come up with the plan, the application. Pretty much the same thing that we've done with Hitchcock. This was with a, with a different group. We have not heard anything from IDNR and whether or not they're going to push back the application dates. And, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens with Ozley. It's with the, where the state is going to burn through money. I don't know if they're going to keep the particular grant program open. We'll just have to wait and see. But for this year, I'd say just go ahead and delete it because at this point, we're going to miss the, the deadline unless they adjust it. One of the other things has to deal with parks as well. They were looking to get rather ambitious this year. They had about $120,000 budget. And my suggestion is that we cut in half the parks budget, and we focus just on Prairie Park. That doesn't include the Elburn Station Park. This was just going to be new expenses. And we were talking about this a little bit earlier about the Prairie Park, what the plan is out there. The bridge is finally going back in. We tore out a bunch of concrete and took out the, the gazebo. If you've been out to Prairie Park and took a look at that thing. Phil, how deep were those, those footings set on the gazebo?
Um, on the gazebo? Yeah, on the gazebo and on the bridge, it was about two and a half feet at the most.
So it's no wonder that the dang thing heaved and torqued so much is that they're only set at about two and a half feet. Should have been set down, of course, so it can get down below the frost line, especially with the bridge being in a stream that really torqued the bridge. So anyways, the plan is is to put a different gazebo out there, different shelter, similar to what was done out at Elliott Park, and cut back on the amount of concrete by quite a bit. So we're going to keep our costs down, and we just really want to focus on, on the north side, and Prairie Park is a good place to do that. So all told, that's just a touch over $200,000 out of admin and parks.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yeah, good job.
Next department we go to is police. And Nick, are you there? There you are.
I'm here. I am.
If you want to review those with us.
Okay, I can do that. Going through the list, obviously, there's a few things on here. I think Doug would reiterate the fact that there's, there's not a lot of places to cut from the police budget. You don't have a real, I don't do a fluff budget, I never have. But we looked at kind of more what our wants were this year rather than needs, and started with that. So a couple of things in here. I talked with Deputy Chief and myself, both starting at the top here. We normally have a $700 uniform allowance that is included. We will forego that, and either, you know, if we have to replace something, we'll just pay for it out of pocket for this year. We're not tied to any contracts, obviously, so there's nothing in there. Maintenance service building, we had looked at adding two additional cameras inside the police department just to get some better views on some uncovered areas that had been identified in the past. We're willing to defer those and look to do those at a later date. Training, we had one officer that was scheduled for a, to begin a three-part series for a evidence training class. There are some lower level classes that are offered through our training group. If we ever get back to our local training group, and training kind of gets back on file after this whole COVID situation, but we would look to just obviously push that off. It is a pretty pricey class offered through Northwestern University. So that is at 1,875 that we would push off to another year. And the next one is a little small, and then it ties into one later on, ammunition. We were looking at converting our existing shotguns, which are very seldom taken out or carried by the officers anymore, to change those into another less lethal option. We'll just defer that for another budget year. The next item under DUI enforcement, this is campaign monies that we have put in each year. And previously, due to staffing concerns, we really haven't been able to participate a lot in these countywide DUI enforcement campaigns. We were hoping that with improvements in staffing this year, we'd be able to get back online for that. But again, willing to just forego that for this year. We'll do our own normal DUI enforcement here. And, you know, maybe just use a on-duty officer. If there's a countywide type campaign going on where we would just do it along with normal patrol tactics and not be hiring in somebody specifically to participate in those. Next item on the list is $1,000. We were looking to replace one of our old handheld radar units that just is literally falling apart right now. We'll forego that. We do still have one other one that's working, plus an instrument called a LiDAR, which is a laser-style radar that we purchased a year ago. So we'll continue to make do with those. We were looking to add another of the newer bicycles. And again, we did some tune-ups on the old ones last year. We'll just forego replacing and continue to use the ones that we have for another year. And we can push those off. The other part of that item that I talked about earlier with the shotgun rounds, this was the conversion kits that need to be placed on the shotguns. Again, we'll defer that. And then lowering our amount of community relations giveaway items. We, you know, anticipate, obviously, we're going to have some lower amounts of community events potentially coming up. And even if we don't lose some of those events, probably have a lower turnout for some, or we'll just simply make do with less things to give away or look at some, you know, reduced price, some of the, the simpler items, kind of the staple of the kids' badge stickers and those kind of things that, you know, they go a long way, but they don't cost us much to do in regards to those. So those are kind of the, the step up right out of the gate kind of things. Obviously, that's $14,000 savings there. Couple of the things that we're really, may not be quite sure about. You know, we don't know what's going to happen with Elburn Days. Could it potentially be canceled? That's been talked about. There are some issues with getting an insurance policy right now from the last meeting we were at. So we have to kind of wait and see. If we don't have Elburn Days, that's a significant amount of what we budget for our special details for each year. So we could see a savings in those special detail. That's basically an overtime line item for us. The next one under legal, looking at some reduced fees. Obviously, we haven't been doing as much court stuff. I think Bill can attest to that with Erica, and, you know, things have just simply been being pushed off. We're already working towards the possibility of doing more through administrative adjudication and possibly shifting away from the ordinance violations going to the circuit clerks and into the courtrooms where we need to have the attorney there to prosecute. If we shift more of those ordinance-only violations to administrative adjudication, we don't have the attorneys present for that. Wouldn't anticipate as much of a legal fees item if we get moved over to that a little later on this fiscal year. The next item is a training line that is for me to attend the International Chiefs Conference. Don't know if that's going to happen. I actually just got a survey today from the International Chiefs of Police Association, kind of putting out some feelers, who would still be going, who might be available or not be available or comfortable going to a large conference that's normally scheduled to occur in October. So looking at either, even if, if it would get canceled or if it does wind up happening and I would decide to go, I would pay for that out of pocket rather than the village paying. So those are some additional savings of another $14,000. And then we already made the next savings, the $45,000. We didn't purchase the CSO pickup truck. We're already moving towards repurposing the squad car that's coming out for that saving. So that's already identified. And then the last item is the item that's in the budget where we had proposed a additional full-time officer to come onboard in November. Looking to see, we, we have our officer that's in training right now. Hopefully, we'll get him out and get him in. And then we have budgeted in May the replacement officer for Officer Janito so that we can get that position filled and get that position back working. Deputy Chief and I kind of sat down, reviewed where we're at, what we're doing, and feel we can defer that out further before hiring in that next full-time officer that was scheduled for the November hire. Kind of one of the things that just came up, I know you just talked about. We have the officer slated that was supposed to be a May 1 hire for the replacement for Officer Janito, who's been approved for his disability pension. That is going to save us a little bit. That academy date for that officer, which was supposed to be a May 17 reporting date, I received an email over the weekend that that reporting date has now been pushed off to the middle of June. So we would not look to bring that officer onboard until the first board meeting in June for swearing in and then get him in so we can get uniforms and equipment and all of the necessary paperwork done. We typically look to bring them in two weeks before the reporting date. So that would also give us about a one-month identified savings right now with salary and benefits where we would delay bringing that officer onboard. So I have already communicated that to that officer. We're still in the process with police commission on him. That conditional job offer went out quite a while ago. And so we are in that process before this whole COVID situation came up. And we are, by our attorneys, we're, we're pretty much tied into that. Plus, we do have, with these full-time officers, we are tied into academy dates when we're looking at ones on the eligibility list that aren't already certified where we're at. So, but again, I don't know if that date might get pushed out further. There might even be more savings with that. But that's something, just as of an email from over this weekend that we've identified now, there's no reason for us to bring that officer on May 1. So we'll have a one-month savings in salary and benefits, at least as of right now with that, which is not reflected on this sheet. So I guess with that, I would, you know, if anybody has any questions or discussion, anything that I need to clarify, that's where we're at right now with our go-through.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Any questions for Nick?
No.
All right, let's move on. Public Works, Phil, would you like to review your items?
Sure. What I did is I put it in basically three rounds. The fourth round, we don't want to get into. But basically, the first round is, I think, our cuts that we can make pretty easily. When I say easily, are they a little painful? Yeah, but it's nothing like if we were to make some of the bigger cuts down the road. The first cut would be one new hire, and that was for $71,497. So we're going to, you know, if we need to deter that, that's what we're going to do. Moving down the line, we've got floors. We had those in three different departments. That's something we can push off. We've got an extra amount of money, and I shouldn't say extra, but we've got quite a bit of brush clearing throughout the village that we were going to do. You know, we still can do some of it, but I thought we could cut a little bit out of the operations with that. I've cut 5,000 out of the general engineering. The street light supplies, we could, we can probably cut. The tree program, that might be, that might be someplace where we can cut for the year. Also, we've got money in there for pipe cameras. And for the first round, that was, that came up to $72,000, and that was general streets operating. Yeah.
Just, just real quick, how much money do you need to spend for Tree City?
I think it's $15,000. So that, if we, if we feel we want to stay with that Tree City, I know that's, I think we've been with it for 20-some years. John, you remember?
Right.
I mean, if, if the, the village feels strongly about it, we can always put at least 15 back in to cover our trees so we can stay, stay with Tree City.
And then you would have to figure out where else to take the 15.
Right, right. Find out where else we can cut a little. Getting into Streets Capital, we had a mower in there. We had another, we had another truck, and we had some storm sewer work. So with that being said, you know, we had, I think, $85,000 in storm sewer work, $65,130. So we had $163,000. I would feel that we could cut out of Streets Capital as a starter or defer. Water, water and sewer ops, we really didn't cut much out of there because that fund seems to be pretty healthy. Although we did have like the floors, we were, part of the, the floors in the, in the Public Works does get expensed out through water and sewer operations. MFT, believe it or not, I felt that we could probably cut that all together only more or less, I feel secure with the, the amount of salt we have in stock. We've got approximately 150 ton on the ground yet in the building. So I felt that that's something we could probably cut, and I don't think it'll come back and nip us. And then, as you can see, we have round two. Now, total of round one was 351,747. Round two, if we need to tighten our belt a little tighter, there was a broom for, for a skid steer that we could use for cleaning up, I should say, for cleaning off, let's say, gutters and stuff like that in parts of Elburn where the trees have a tendency to dirty it up pretty good. That can get caught. This is in round two, and that would be out of Streets Operation. Streets Capital, we had put in there for a hoop building. This hoop building is for a little extra storage. We're getting pretty cramped here at Public Works. Could we put that off for a year? Sure. I mean, it, it's something that would definitely be nice to keep everything housed, but if we can't, and have to leave it in the weather, that's, it can go a year. The design engineering for Tricilis, we had $43,000 in there. That could be bumped along, along with the Cambridge Design Engineering. Actually, it was Tricilis was 50, and Cambridge was 43, if we feel we need to. So those cuts for the next round would have been like 205,500. And then hopefully, we don't get to this, but the third round would be definitely our Streets Program this year and some of the sidewalks. So that would be basically out of Streets Capital, and that would be at 234,000. Now, also, keep in mind, in Streets Capital, we did budget quite a bit for Anderson Road, and hopefully, I don't know when those funds would come back, but we did budget $920,625 for federal funds for Anderson Road. So hopefully, with everything went well, maybe we can get that money back, whether it be this year. I don't know exactly how fast they pay, pay that out, but hopefully, that's something that, you know, we can get back. So without that, the total was 791,000 for all three rounds. So.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Any, any questions for Phil?
No.
All right, let's move on. So then if you look at the next page, it's the savings summary by department. Now, this, this includes everything, like in police, it, it includes what we were calling possibles. So when you include the possibles in police, and then in Public Works, if you include all the rounds, round one, round two, round three, and then the 201,000 from administration, you add those all up, we're at $1,138,000 and change. So that's, so that's, that will satisfy what the current projected revenue reduction is. If it's a quick recovery. If it's a, if it's a long recovery from this pandemic, a long economic recovery, then this is, this is going to be about half of what we need, little, little over half of what we need. But the long, a long recovery though will be spread across multiple fiscal years. So I want to thank the department heads for going through this exercise. This wasn't easy, folks. I mean, this, this was not easy at all, and, and it won't be easy going forward. I mean, I mean, it, it hurts. It hurts a lot. And, you know, our department had to do a good job with, with the available resources they have. They do a good job of managing their resources. And now we're going to take a whole bunch of those resources away from them. So.
All right, Doug, I've got a couple of questions for you as we move on.
Go ahead.
Open it up for the other folks for questions as well. But my first question is on, on these reductions that you call out here. There's no numbers associated with it. I'd like to know where this 22% comes from, and I'm not expecting an answer right now. I think this is just further research. I'd like to know exactly 22%. How does that affect each one of these taxes? I'd like to know what the budgeted tax was, what the reduction is. I just, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to see where 22% comes from, and I can't see that here. And then also, what is our current, I guess rainy day fund, we could call it, our savings? And if we dip into that, I think we're sitting at about 2.3 million? 3.3 million, which is how many times operating? 10 months. So we have 10 months' operating income in the bank right now. If we go down to maybe five months' operating income and take some of that and put it back in or whatever the board might think, I just think that that's something we might have to look at as well rather than some of the cuts on these pages. Some of them, yes, I can see they're just kind of fluff, but some of it, I, I think we, we can't get, especially some of the round two and three stuff in Public Works, in my opinion. So I'd like to see. So I'd like to see that number, how that reduces our twenty-two percent number of nine hundred and seventy-four thousand. And then give the board a little more information on how we get to that twenty-two percent fund by fund. You know, do we really expect, I mean, if sales tax is our biggest one, it goes down by twenty-two percent, I don't know the property tax is going to go down. That's not changing, right? And if that's the bulk of our, right?
So I handed out a pretty extensive spreadsheet at the last meeting that detailed it fund by fund and revenue source by revenue source, and the percentage, percentage loss in each one of those by month. So why don't I resend that to you?
That'd be great.
The, like I said at the last meeting and said earlier again at this meeting, some of these are unknowns. We don't know exactly what the revenue reduction is going to be. And I reiterated that again with the Illinois Municipal League today. They, they gave a projected reduction in the revenues that the state controls. And there again, the Municipal League is saying, we don't know. We're, we're trying to make our, our best informed analysis of what, of what might happen here, but they said, we don't know. What we do know is there's going to be significant reduction. We just don't know how much.
Well, certainly for cities like Chicago, that are, the larger cities are going to see bigger hits. But I mean, let's look at our, our income sources and our reduction. So we're making sound decisions based on Elburn and not some model that somebody just put out there that may or may not be applicable.
I get that. I will resend the spreadsheet that went out at the last meeting. So, and, and that, that details it out about as specific as you can get. In fact, it's more detailed than what most people even want to think about. So so here, here is my suggestion. My suggestion is that we see, we take a wait-and-see attitude on making our final adjustments to our budget. And another month will maybe tell us a little more about what's going to happen here. But my suggestion is that we proceed as if we had made the cuts that we were talking about tonight. We're not going to formulate amend the budget tonight or, or the next meeting, but we need to proceed in a very cautious manner. So if we say, well, the board didn't make the cut yet, so I'm going to go out and, and do this or do that because they haven't actually officially cut it yet, well, we, we can't do that. We just, we just can't do that. And so we need to really tighten up on things until we get a better handle on what's actually going to happen. And we may not know that for a month or two months yet, but we may know more in a month. But we are definitely going to have to reduce our expenses. Now, you talked about using the, you referred to it as a rainy day fund. That's the reserve. That's called the fund reserve. In last year's budget, the board voted to spend more money than what we took in, and that's called a deficit budget. So last year, they approved a deficit budget. I don't have that number, how much of a deficit it was. I don't have it right in my fingertips, and I can't look it up right now. And the new year's budget also was approved as a deficit budget that you're planning to spend more money than what you're going to bring in. So, and, and we're looking at it to the tune of a few hundred thousand dollars. It, it's not just, you know, we're going to spend a hundred dollars more than we're going to take in. No, we're looking at a few hundred thousand dollars. So yes, we have a reserve, and once it's gone, it's gone. And does that mean we can never use it for anything? No, of course not. But my concern is this. I don't think this nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars is going to get the job done. So my thought was, we make the reductions in our budget now to meet this first wave. And then if it goes beyond that, then we can dip into our reserves to make up the difference. Because I think, I think this is going to be an extended recovery on this. And I think it will be more than what we can operationally do and, and still get the job done here in our village. But we can't, we don't have enough in reserve to do it all. So this is my suggestion. Make the budget cuts now. And those are going to be very difficult cuts, not now, but within the next month or six weeks. And then if this second wave of this hits us, and the, the revenue reductions are more than what we think they're going to be, then that's when we start dipping into the reserves to make up the difference.
Well, go ahead, Bill.
I'm a little curious as to our retail sales tax and what portion the automotive, I mean, Bob Joss specifically may, and even the tractors, you know, Walker, opposed to basically the foods or, you know.
We don't know. If, if we, if we had more than one auto dealership in town, the report that we get from the Department of Revenue would tell us how much we get from car sales, automobile sales. But since there's only one dealer in town, they don't, they don't split that category out by itself because then they'd actually be telling you how much business Bob Jass does. And, and that, they're not in the business of doing that. So they lump that revenue in, into the general category. So, so we don't know. And it's the same thing with the implement dealer that, because there's only one of them in town, they don't single that out as a single category. And if we called them to ask them, they wouldn't tell us for that very same reason.
So we really can't say, you know, typically the, the hard stuff like automotive and, and implements are twenty or thirty percent or forty. We have no idea. Because right now, car sales are
Slow.
Slow, to say the least, yeah. And all that'll change. But, you know, they're also talking about rationing meat and stuff too. I mean, you know, come on, that, that would truly be kind of difficult.
What, is it okay if I talk?
All right, ahead.
All right. So I, I really do appreciate staff's effort in this. I think it's a very wise way of moving forward. I think we have at least a month to two months to be able to figure out what's going to be happening a little more specific. It may go a little longer. I think having staff hold off on some of these things that are listed here, or all the things listed there, until we get another perspective, a more defined number, then, then we can move forward, maybe some of these things. I, ten months of, of having savings, to me, in this economy, and we dipped into it two years in a row, I'm okay to keep the ten month there and, and wait for an emergency. When we budget it on an annual basis, and we're, we're employing people, those are reoccurring expenses, that, that having a savings does not cover it in another year. So we have to look at revenue as being our primary source of, of funding the Village of Elburn. So I think making sure, if we can hold off on these expenses, and if we do it formally in a month or two months, or whatever it's going to be, but if we can work with staff on that, I think that's the appropriate way. I think other governmental agencies are doing the same thing. They're not jumping into their savings right off the bat. They're, they're curtailing their expenses so that they can get a better feel for what's going to be happening.
Well, yeah.
Well, I think it comes down to it, then we start cutting these projects, then we have to, we can start cutting staff as well because we just don't have work for people.
What do you mean? You don't have work for people?
Well, if we're, we're cutting, I mean, you see the list of things that would be cut, you know, we're, we're taking work. There won't be work. We don't do any street work. We don't do any of these other projects. Who's?
Some of those big projects are third parties. They're, they're not our staff. Our staff is still doing the work.
That is true. I, I, that's true. But I think that's something we have to look at as well. Last time we went through this recession reduction, we almost wiped out a whole department.
And there's one man standing in building and zoning, right?
Right?
Yeah.
But look how many people we've added since the economy turned, right? How many full and part timers we brought in?
I think that's a good point. It's really what we got to start taking, okay, what's going to happen over the next two to four months? If the stay-at-home gets lifted at the end of the month, we get businesses open again, it's going to take them at least two, three months before they start to, you know, generate business again. And then we can start to see what kind of revenues that are there. My biggest concern is that when everybody starts to pull back the amount of spending they're going to do, and I'm talking about in aggregate, it, it, it will cause a recession and do more permanent harm to our overall economy. So my, my hope is, is that we get businesses open. And personal opinion, I think all businesses are essential. They need to get open for business. We do need to watch what we're spending. Everything on that list needs to be deferred. I don't want to adjust the, the budget, but definitely things are on hold until we can get a better idea of what's going on. And I think we're going to see that in more of the two to four month range.
So I think if we can hold off on these things for now and see what happens with the economy, most of the economists are saying the recession is already here. It's, it has already started. It's not, it may lead to a recession. No, they're, they're saying it has already started. And and I, I believe that. It, it has already started. And my concern is if we, if we don't treat this seriously, we're, we're going to be hurting. And so we, we have to manage it. And, and we have been able to manage it through the last several years, and we need to continue to do a good job of managing our resources.
Bars and our restaurants in the village and places like Greens, you know, the non-publicly owned places are getting any money from the government? Is there any feedback anywhere on that, that you hear anything about that?
Do you hear anything? I have not heard anything, but.
The, the only thing I've heard of is that, I believe it was Izanos or Eddie's got a grant. And then they came through the chamber, the, the news came through the chamber. I, I haven't heard from anybody else.
Yeah, Eddie's did get a grant.
Has the chamber chimed in with any of their view on this? I mean, we've been working, Doug's been working with as far as the chamber or guys or, you know.
The chamber hasn't done a whole lot. They, they, they've been putting out some of the information that's coming out of DCEO. Got quite the echo going. You're muted now? Well, where's that coming from? It's not on my computer.
Whatever I had before, which was, it was on safe driving mode. That was steep, so I shouldn't be muted.
TVs are off.
Somebody else have two microphones on?
Oh, my hearing aids.
I don't know.
Wow, this is bad.
That's going to be weird if that's it. Hang on, guys. You said on a space base. Okay.
I don't think they did, they didn't.
Oh, my gosh. I can't hear anything echoing, but echoing. Oh, what happened?
Does this work any better?
It sounds, I'm hoping.
All right. Well, here, I'm going to sit next to Jeff for a little bit. Here, let me pull up a chair. Yeah, we're, we're, we're spaced apart. No, the chamber has not, I, I've not seen a whole lot coming out of the chamber. They've just been passing out some of the other information. I've sent them stuff from DCEO. They've been passing it out to their, to their members. You know, just trying to get them as much information as possible. A lot of this stuff, it, it has to be business owner generated. It's not anything that the village can do for them.
Exactly, exactly, Ken.
It, you know, we, we've been trying to push as much information as it comes out to the chamber. So, you know, so that they can get their information out. The COGS are a little bit differently. They, they represent the municipalities. And so they've been working with IML. They've been, you know, working cooperatively with the other COGS, mayors and managers, the DuPage COG, Northwest Municipal, you know, just trying to get one voice so that the State House can hear us, what's going on, the things that we're seeing. And they've been contacting the local reps as well. You know, they did a, I don't know, a two, three trillion dollar bailout of everybody, but the municipalities didn't get anything, or if there was some, it went to, I believe, to the counties. And the counties are supposed to distribute some of that money. But there was nothing that was set up that said, well, based on your per capita, you're going to get this, you're going to get that. So we're, we're last on, on the totem pole of getting any sort of federal money or any other sort of relief. So I, I hope that kind of answers your question of what we've, what we've been seeing.
Just a sad, sad situation right now.
You know, it personally, it just kind of bothers me when they start talking about, you know, essential versus non-essential businesses. You know, you took a look at, you know, small business owner, tell him that he's not, or her, that they're not essential. And, you know, they're trying to feed their kid and pay their mortgage and do, you know, do all the right things, but they're, you know, they're not essential. So, you know, whatever we can do, whatever voice we can put out there to try to get Elburn open again, will, will certainly, you know, lead us down the right path, I think.
All right. Any comments on this?
No.
Keep monitoring it every two weeks and see where we go.
Well, well, I think, I think we need to, to do more than just monitor. I think we have to. I think we have to decide right now what, where we wanna go with this, and my suggestion is we just clamp down real tight on expenditures for the time being until we know for sure what's gonna happen. And, and I know the department heads don't like that because it means things have to get deferred, and I know the elected officials don't like that because, you know, we, we all want to do things in our community to, to make our community a better community, but I think we need to really hold tight for the time being, and maybe we can loosen up a few months down the road. Because there's a lot of unknowns now, and we don't know which way they're gonna go. So I would elect for us to go very, very cautiously until we know that we can loosen up a little bit.
I, I would agree, Doug, cuz that's, that's all, that's all I know personally. So I would agree.
Yeah, I thought that was kinda the similar thought everybody was expressing, so I, I guess I thought we were all on that same page at this point.
Well, and, you know, without taking a formal vote to, to make hard decisions here, I just, you don't wanna...
We can't do a budget amendment in a cow.
No, no, and it takes a hearing to do a budget amendment, and we're not, we're not, we're not to that point yet, but...
I think the only thing we can do is that, that I can say, hold off on all capital projects until further notice. I don't know what else we can do. I mean, there's...
Well, there were a lot of...
Anything we can do is amend the budget.
There were a lot of things on the list tonight that, that were not capital, that we can defer, and I, I think we need to defer it, even though we haven't yet made it official that we're deferring it or, or modifying the budget, but we, we need to defer it. And we may be surprised, in two months, we may be over all of this, and, and the stock market goes back up and the economy goes back up, but there's just a lot of things happening right now that kinda make me think it's not gonna be a very fast recovery.
Well, the, the material we have tonight does not have anything by date, so it's kinda hard to say when, what was supposed to happen when. Some stuff is already underway, can't be stopped. So no new projects, no new purchases, no new hiring. Is that about covered, Doug? I mean, I don't know what else we can, we can do.
Well, we can, we, we can abide by the departmental suggestions that we're seeing tonight, and then we'll have to at some point make it official when we know more about what we think's gonna happen with the economy. We are looking at a budget amendment here, but and it seems like we're all under the same frame of mind. Let's, let's just go really cautiously and don't, don't go crazy in buying things that we don't need right now. We can defer projects, we can defer capital, capital purchases, and let's, let's wait and see if, see what happens a couple months down the road.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, yeah. We have to do operations, so right now, we're just doing operational spends. So department heads, you're all on here, right?
Yep.
Everybody's here? Operational spends only, no new projects, no capital expenditures, and then we'll see where we're going, and if it's an emergency, then you have to, you know, I mean, it's, it's within your budget, the budget's approved. We can change the budget, but only by a hearing and a vote. We can't sit here on a cow and move money around.
Sure, and we're...
I can say no more spending than operational, I think, right? I mean, I think we can do that.
Well, if, if you can't, I will.
I think I'm your supervisor.
We're on the same page.
So that's, well, well, how we'll proceed for now. So if you had capital projects coming up in May, or new hiring, or, or anything, everything's frozen except for normal day-to-day operations.
I've got a question. So far as any projects in sewer and water, do you wanna hold off on that even though it's in a different fund?
No, I think sewer and water, in my opinion, is, is an enterprise fund.
Right.
We're not gonna lose money, people are still gonna use sewer and water.
Right, right.
I don't think we're gonna see...
I just, I just wanna make sure it's clarified. I know that's the kinda way, the route we wanted to do is...
You didn't have much in there anyway.
Phil, let's put it this way, if you had a project that was split three ways, don't do it. If it's solely water, if it's solely sewer, you've got the money to do it. You're the enterprise fund.
That's right, and I just didn't know if we were slowing down everything or if we just wanted to pretty much streets capital.
You got stuff that's half-done right now, too, that has to get finished up, right?
Pardon me?
You've got stuff that's half-done that has to get finished up right now in the new year. I mean, you can't leave some of this work you've gotten started, you've gotta finish it, or at least get it to the...
Right, and, and those are, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a lot smaller money than, let's say, street projects or that.
Right, so no street work, no new street work, other than emergency patching if we have to.
Okay.
Well, Cambridge, if that works, there's...
Gotta wait.
Gotta wait.
That's gonna wait, too.
That's storm sewer, so it's gonna come out of...
Well, I'm, I'm sure it's not doing much to get me re-elected, but, you know, it's gotta wait, it's gotta wait.
Yeah.
General fund work.
It is what it is.
That's where we're gonna have problems with the funding.
Yeah.
So let's see what the impact truly is, and if it's not as bad, then we'll move on. If it is, then we cut.
Can you, I'm curious if anyone knows when, if there's a date that Elburn days will be decided?
The last meeting I was at, they were gathering all of the top dead dates for orders, and the first one is till the end of the month, so I, I think looking towards the end of the month to make that decision.
Okay.
Just from the police department perspective, just to make sure that I'm clear, obviously, already, we purchased the replacement squad car, and I have orders placed for the equipment to finish up that, which was approved. Just making sure we're good to continue on that with those that have been, that's been started, similar to like, you know, Phil's couple of projects. And all of those things that we identified from the police department budget right now, I am fully expecting to place on hold all those things identified on our list that are listed out until we get further direction from the board or until this thing goes further. You know, that is certainly my intention from the police department perspective, that we're just in a holding pattern, we're keeping up our normal, all those things identified on that list, they're, they're gonna stay on that list of wants until we determine whether we can do them or they get deferred further out.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm onto strategic plan then.
All right, I'll be right back.
I've got a copy right here.
All right, I'm gonna still share the, the screen with the mayor here, just so we're not getting the feedback, not really sure what that was all about, why it came up. But a couple of things I wanted to do, it's been a little while since we've taken a look at the strategic plan. We started to do this back in March, but ran really late, and so wanted to make sure that everybody's brought up to speed. One of the nice things about this strategic plan, it's now about two years old, and I think that we've made a lot on there, and, you know, one of my proposals for next year is that we sit down and we revise it, we go through, we update it. So we'll do that about a year from now after the election. If we have any new people coming onto the board, it would be a great time to do it, and so three years into it, which will be pretty much the timeframe for short-term goals. So starting with the STR1, I broke that out into A and B. The multi-year CIP, that has been completed. The thing that will always be out there is the financing plan. How do we finance all of our capital needs? And, you know, it's always an unknown. Look at the conversation that we just had, and so we will be taking a look at this going forward as well. Create a condition rating report process for all infrastructure. Phil's starting to do that with, particularly with streets, and we'll be doing that with water and sewer as well. So that is ongoing. And if you have any questions on this at any time, please, you know, go ahead and interrupt me, otherwise I'm just gonna breeze right on through this, okay? Evaluate service delivery methods, you know, assess in-house capability, strengths, and possibilities. Once again, you know, without the strategic plan, you know, well, what, what the strategic plan does for us is provides us with an excellent roadmap of where to go. And if we've got more tough decisions coming up here financially, this one will be incredibly important because we will have to determine what level of service that we provide to our residents. We did the waste taller, things that we're still looking at is fiber and admin adjudication. One of the things that will be coming up in the next meeting or two, will be getting my recommendation to get fiber into this building to crank up the, the available bandwidth that we have, and along with the project is a new connection between here and public works, and finally, between here and wastewater treatment plants, so that we can start to carry data back and forth over a virtually managed network. Comprehensive municipal code update. The zoning code is definitely on hold, they started to price out their project last year, it's about a hundred thousand dollar project. What I'm hoping it's, we can get a grant from CMAP next year, they have a call for projects, and that we can get that approved. As we're gonna have to come up with, you know, between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars to have that completely revamped. Keep in mind, that's nineteen ninety-three. Tom and I started it, we got into it, and it was incredibly complex, and it took a lot of time, and we didn't make it very far. And so I don't think that we'd be able to deliver the product that Elburn deserves in a decent amount of time. So we're definitely gonna need outside help with that. Admin adjudication, I know that's something that Nick has been working on, trying to get the other communities, you know, whether we piggyback off of Sugar Grove and that group down there, or we do something with Campin Hills, I think. Nick, doesn't Sugar Grove look more promising for the admin adjudication?
Yes, it does. I'm waiting on IGA to come back from them. Bill Thomas reviewed it, had a request for a couple of changes, I've sent that back to them. I just, I'll reach back out to Chief Rollins down in Sugar Grove. They kinda had it back, just waiting on it to come back from their attorneys, hopefully, with some agreed-upon language, and then as soon as we get the, the okays from the attorneys on that, I'll be bringing that to the board for hopefully a vote of approval to get going on that and get that started, and then we'll move forward from there.
All right, thanks, Nick. STR4, examine village committees and commission structures, roles, functionality. You know, identify commissions to ensure public input, volunteerism. We did start the ad hoc committee, I know Bill's been working on that. To say I'm disappointed as far as the amount of response that we've gotten to fill an open's position on parks and on planning, we've just not had the interest. It's been on, on our website, it's been out on Facebook a few times, just haven't gotten very much of a response of people that wanna get involved with it. I don't, maybe you know somebody out there that we need to strong-arm a, a good quality person to come in here and sit on either one of those two committees. Okay, so, does he's got somebody in mind for planning?
We're at ad hoc, really, we were meeting at the library, Laura Chapman was a central part of it. I mean, with the, with the shutdown at the library, things have really stopped with minimal communications. We haven't had any meetings actually since the library shut. And there's five thousand bucks in the budget, which is highly unlikely we're even gonna get near even spending anything other than supplies, and I said, oh, supplies like paper and stuff, that's not an issue. But as far as anything going into the library, that could probably just be used for, you know...
Well, we'll, we'll take a look at that as well, see if we can add that in. Not ranked, explore local sales tax, thankfully, that's been approved. We're putting a regular schedule for long-term plan reviews and updates, and physical connectivity across the community. We are approved for an RTAC map grant that should start to get underway in June. Our commitment to that is about just a couple dollars over eighteen thousand dollars, and that's for a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Our portion would be, I think, eighteen, two hundred and fifty. I think that one would be worthwhile to go forward with. We're leveraging a lot of local dollars to get something that we need. On the short term. All right, going on a short-term complex, taking a look at the village website that has been completed, we, probably our biggest problem with the website is not so much that it needed to be overhauled, but we just need to make sure that we take the out-of-date stuff off of there so it doesn't become cluttered. I think we're decent about putting things out there, but just to keep it from getting over with a lot of clutter, we need to do a much better job of getting old stuff off of there.
If I can ask a question on that, Jeff? Who, who does that for us? Is that IT?
No, we do that internally.
Okay.
So...
We've got folks that...
Yeah. Right.
Not Jeff, John. Anyway, yeah, no, I was just, so that's done in-house.
Yes.
So, but it takes a certain amount of...
Each, each department has a person that can put stuff up there, and so when, you know, a topic comes up, we're pretty decent about putting things up.
Yeah.
We don't always remember to take old stuff down.
Okay.
It's just a matter of, of cleaning out the clutter so that we don't have, you know, two-year-old postings of a lost dog, you know, for example, out there.
Right.
Explore multiple platforms, you know, tech, social media, web. Bill actually kinda hit on it, you know, we really don't have anybody, one person that would be our, you know, our PAO, our, our public rep, to get that one voice out there, and it's, it's something that I, I think that we need to, you know, find somebody to do that.
And for those of you that weren't in the Navy, PAO is Public Affairs Officer.
Sorry, Public Affairs.
And that's my public service announcement for the evening.
Very useful.
I'll translate, I'll be the translator.
Thank you. Undertake a space needs assessment for village-wide facilities. That is actually something, at least one of the space needs that will be coming up. Hopefully, we can get everybody in the same room for a presentation on the eighteenth. Have a presentation for the police department of what, take what it could possibly look like, you know, some ideas kick around, and even some price tags. And even price tags, or I say, of, um, of what all that's going to cost. So. I think it's worthwhile taking a look at that, um, even if it's something that may get pushed off, unfortunately, another year or two, depending on how quickly we get out of this. But, you know, Elburn continues to grow, we're going to need space for, for our people. So. Implementation of emergency operation plan. Um, I believe that we are waiting on just one outside entity, uh, before Nick is going to be ready to present that, uh, that document. And, um, I'm looking forward to that, so that quite possibly could be on the eighteenth. It may, uh, may slip into June, but I think that's something that needs to get in front of the board quickly. Uh, just so that you've had time to, to digest it, take a look at it, read it, and, and come with questions when we meet face-to-face. Uh, STC four, uh, village-wide staffing level and design, that was one of the studies that got put on deferral for this year. Uh, so we'll see what ends up happening with them. Um, also not ranked, uh, economic development plan. Uh, Rock forty-seven, eighty-eight interchange, how we're going to deal with that. Uh, it's my understanding that tomorrow night, Sugar Grove is going to be discussing de-anexing the Crown property.
Voting on it.
Oh, they are going to vote on it. Okay. Um, so if they do vote to de-annex, uh, you can be rest assured that we are going to be having people, uh, down south asking us, what are we going to do? And, um, you know, it's, it's kind of up in the air. Participate in, uh, boundary negotiations. Uh, I have to, Camp and Hills, they are uninterested at this time in pursuing any sort of boundary. Our neighbor to the south is incredibly interested in coming up with a boundary agreement. They, uh, they keep pushing for Main Street. I told them CB, and they came back with Smith Road. Uh, so we've got a little bit of a disagreement on where that boundary, uh, should be. Uh, but once we get through the comp plan, of which I also hope to have on the eighteenth, uh, that that is another discussion that we can have. Moving on to long-term. Uh, develop long-term financial plan for the vigil, villages' trends. Um, I don't think I need to say too much more about that. Uh, we've got the villages' CIP, um, implement the results. And also keep in mind, long-term, we're looking at five to seven years. And so we're, we're two years away from trying to implement anything on this. Uh, and as you can see, that even in those, uh, the time that has passed, uh, in the two years, and this next year, before we take a look at updating, quite a bit has changed. And, uh, so we'll, uh, we'll look forward to having everybody's input and see how our priorities line up with what we have. Hopefully, we can get a comprehensive code review done. Uh, the comp plan will be done and, and in fact, uh, may either need to be updated again in five to seven years, or we'll have to do it all over again, just, uh, depending on how much has changed. Completed transfer, planned transition from full-time staffing in the police department. Uh, you know, that's one of the things that has been a goal, is trying to get away from part-time and go to more, uh, full-time police officers. A couple of other things on there, uh, Village Park Department operating as a, uh, village function. Uh, we'll see how Elburn Station does, uh, with the Master Association. Uh, we're trying to do the Village Pathway connectivity plans. Monitor growth on the school district. I believe back in December that was sent out, the school district is flat and/or shrinking. Um, and so, um, they probably would appreciate a few more students coming through. Uh, study and examine, um, home role status. Um, that hasn't even hit the, the radar, haven't had any descriptions on that topic at all. So going to the last page, long-term complex, um, something that Phil is working on, stormwater system with enhanced functionality. Do an annual review of the completed, uh, EOP, Emergency Operation Plan. Take a look at our IT strategic plan. Uh, this is something that has popped up, uh, recently. How quickly can we get people to evacuate Village Hall and get them to work remotely and still carry out operations? I know that, uh, for Doug and I, we were able to do it. But some of the other administrative functions, at, at this point in time, it's just not possible because we don't have the technology to give them, to get them out of Village Hall and to someplace else. So that is something that we are going to be looking at on a more short-term basis of how do we do that? Um, you know, hopefully, it's not another pandemic shelter-in-place sort of deal. Uh, but, you know, it goes back to, uh, you know, the unimaginables. A train comes off, uh, a truck hits a train, uh, tornado, natural disaster comes through, something like that, and Village Hall cannot be, um, you know, occupied. Where do we go? How do we maintain continuity of operations? And where do we do that from? So. Working with technology partners to establish a village, village-wide accessibility fiber optic network. Um, I believe that the intent behind that was, um, how do we do that for our residents? Uh, well, welcome Metro Nets. They have started. They are, uh, working in Blackberry. Their plan is to start in the south and work their way north. Uh, when we last talked with Metro Net, their plan was to be in and out and done by September. Uh, so that means our side of town, sorry, will probably be last. Um, and those down in Blackberry, uh, will be the first ones to hopefully get onto the network. So I'm going to cross that one off, is completed. Maybe I'll wait until the next update just to see how they're doing. Um, but I'm also looking at bringing Metro Net into, into Village Hall. Uh, and then there's a couple of other items on there for long-term complex. You know, design and construction police department, pedestrian overpass for Metro. Uh, I think that we'll find, uh, with the CMAP grant, uh, that, uh, we'll have a clearer picture of how that, uh, that goal works out. And how we do a shared model, uh, of staffing with other, uh, municipalities or other government entities around us. So that's what I have. I look forward to, you know, going forward with this plan, keeping it going forward as much as possible. And, uh, you know, a year from now, it will be here quicker than you think. And we'll be sitting down again to update our, our plans and, and go over where we've been. Uh, cross off some of our, um, old things that just aren't as important anymore, and adding new stuffs. Any questions?
No, sir.
All right. I do appreciate your time. Um, and, uh, you know, I just want to, uh, make sure that the board understands, uh, you know, what a terrific job everybody has done. I know Doug talked about it a little bit on the financial plan, uh, but even with, uh, you know, Public Works, with police, uh, finance, taking care of utility bills, taking care of business, uh, doing it from home, doing it under these circumstances. I just want to make sure that, uh, you guys know, you know, what a, what a great job that they've done. And, um, I, I, I truly appreciate all the, uh, good, hard-working folks that we've got here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any questions on the strategic plan for John? Um, the only other thing I have for other business, John did mention it, but I was contacted this weekend by the mayor in Sugar Grove, and he said they fully expected the annex tomorrow night. So I guess we'll see if that comes to pass. And then, of course, I would presume after that, they will come try to talk to us as they have in the past. So we'll see where that takes us. Uh, also on the call tonight is our village engineer, and I'm sorry, Julie, I know we were going to give you a line item in the main meeting agenda, so to add that. But Julie, is there anything that you'd like to, to bring before the board? I know there's been a lot going on with Elburn Station. Ken had some concerns about the drainage at the park. I don't know if he's talked to you about it, but we had some conversation. Uh, although the park, I think, right now was out for rebid, so we're not quite sure what's going to happen there. But anyway, Julie, I wanted to give you the opportunity before we adjourn to, uh, address the board.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. And as, uh, Jeff stated, uh, we're just dealing with a lot of stuff with Elburn Station right now, trying to get, uh, Unit Two, all the punch list items closed out, uh, working diligently on that. And then the Unit One punch list process has just started. And then to answer your question, uh, Ken, no, I haven't looked at Liberty Park, but I did print the plans today. And, uh, John Whitehouse and I are going to take a quick look at those tomorrow to see if anything stands out to us. We had reviewed the, uh, stormwater drainage report that was presented to us by Deputy Engineering and, uh, sent those review comments back, but from an overall perspective, as the park itself, from a, you know, a thirty-thousand-foot view, we haven't really looked at that.
That's not all I have.
Wanted to thank you, Julie, and, uh, John and Phil. We had a two-hour meeting with Shodin last week on some of these issues. And I've got to commend Julie as our village engineer. She's really taken to heart that, uh, even though she's a principal at EEI, she's our village engineer and has the, the authority of the village to get things done. And we've, we've laid things out very black and white for our friends at Shodin. Uh, they understand where they stand, they understand what's required. I won't even get into all of the little things that have come up in the last few weeks that they've got to correct, fix, move, redo, whatever the case. But I, thanks to Julie and her team that, uh, there's, they're, they're finding these things and we're, we're standing to it and getting things done right. So we don't, uh, don't have to tax that SSA any more than they need to be taxed, and we don't have any necessary work, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road. So thank you, Julie, for that. That was a fun meeting. Let me just say. All right. Anything else to come before the committee of the whole?
Yeah. The only thing I have to mention is I, I haven't looked through the WRT documents yet. And, but there's been a lot of changes in the administrative code to see if there's anything we can do to possibly get some of that money that's been deposited. So, but I won't have anything for a week because I'm trying to clear out a bunch of other stuff off my plate, uh, this coming week.
All right. Chief, are you in the building, or are you at home?
He's in the building.
Chief?
I'm in the building. Sorry, couldn't get my unmute done there.
There's a guy sitting next to me with like a three-inch blade. He keeps waving at me, and I'm beginning to wonder if he's coming after me at the end of this meeting, or what.
He might, but, uh.
Anyway, anything else?
Is our next eighteenth still by Zoom?
Yes.
We will, if, for those that don't want to come in, Village Hall will be open, uh, as it was tonight, so it's, it's your own personal choice. This is America. We allow freedom of choice here.
Yeah, actually, my battery is just about dead.
Oh, well, you can plug in right behind you. All right. Anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
I would so move to adjourn, Mayor.
Moved by trustee Gherberic, second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Filek. Call in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night. Good night, all.